I've been farming for a week. There he goes. John, I need all these people. Geneau, John Creighton. Shelby, our town clerk. Guy, we're here. Got to throw our plans on the table.
MSD, too.
Hey, John, good to see you.
Has it changed colors or?
How are you?
What's that arm getting stiff from? Shaking in. Babys always be used to that.
You don't want any water or anything like that?
I guess it's a pleasure to work.
Hi, Geneau.
Do you want any water or anything? Kathy Bryson, county attorney. Yeah, that's right. David was in a meeting with somebody.
Very good. Hey, Christie, how are you?
I'm good.
Good.
I love that board. It is awesome. It's really awesome.
So if we could come to order, I believe the legalities of this are, has been to be corrected. I think the legalities are, so they meet in the Weaverville Town Council.
Yes, we just announced that we're going to have four presidents, so we can't.
Okay, well, we are meeting, therefore I guess I got to call them in order anyway. And first, I'd like to very much thank Moncton County and members of the county commissioners that are meeting us here today. We very much appreciate what you do. We have some taste of how hard your life, like it must be, just in Weaverville Council. The work of the county are very much appreciated, all the work you do. But also meeting us here today and discussing these one issues is very, very important to us. I thought it might be helpful, we might not all know each other, just kind of go around the room, say who we are. My name is Val Root, the Weaverville mayor. Can you move me this direction by a building?
Hello, there.
Michael Rose, the town manager.
Walt Curry, Captain Horst.
Kathy Bryson, town attorney.
Daddy, share a glass now.
Cheryl Shields, head clerk.
Geneau Fulton, Commissioner on the council.
Ellen Frost, county question.
John Creighton, planning director.
Joe Belcher, district.
Mike Friar, who is.
And Michael Frew, Moncton County Attorney.
I think the main subject of conversation, why the Weaverville Council did want to meet with the county today, concerns the upcoming transition of our ETJ. Speaking just myself for a second, I think unlike Asheville, it is a giant city, it's got ETJ here, ETJ there, and for them, I understand they've got some transitional issues of their own, but for them, I think it's a fairly, not necessarily major front burner thing for them in many ways. Obviously, for Weaverville, we're a small town, ETJ around us, it's been part of our process for many years. I mean, for us, it's a little more a visible process that is occurring, and I thought it would be a very good idea, my council service thought it would be a very good idea, to meet today, perhaps to get a better understanding of how this process might work through, how the zoning categories might match up, and perhaps to get any councilmen who might want to have the opportunity to talk to everyone a bit about it, and how it's a process of work, an opportunity to do that. I understand John Creighton is very much involved in this process, which makes me very happy, because I've had the opportunity to work with John in other matters, and so I know that John works on his done well and is responsible. But I understand he is able to talk to us for a few minutes this morning about the work he's been doing, how our zoning categories match up, how the new categories might work, should commissioners adopt them. And so, John, I'm trying to talk to you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I guess I could, on two fronts. We're doing the same thing with the city of Asheville. The city of Asheville and Weaverville, two municipalities in Moncton County that have ETJ. Montreat has one, but it's a conservation district, so we're does the survey departments. We, and we're running down the track of the city of Asheville currently, right now. It's a 120-day window before we have to take over, so we're looking at the middle of August to take the city of Asheville over. There's a process that we go through, is that, you know, we have to go to the planning board, and the planning board has to initiate the zoning. So at that point, they initiated, we showed the maps, then we started doing public notices, we sent out letters to anybody that is out of town ownership. We advertise in the paper, we notice adjoining property dollars, which for this case would be a town, Woodford, it may be in an open use district. And then, like I said, we start that timeline to go on down, and then bring it to the commissioners so we can have a public hearing. First, we got to break back the planning board, have a public hearing, then we take it to the commissioners, they have a public hearing, and then initiate. So what we don't want to happen is that we have a window there where we don't have anything. So we want to make sure that we meet all those timelines. Now, looking at the town of Weaverville's zoning districts, you guys match up really close to what we have. We have, we have neighborhood service and commercial service, where you basically have a business district, but, you know, we break this down a little bit more than you would. Trying to get through, you have industrial, we have informant, which is the same. There's a little bit of difference in tweaking when you run through the ordinances, height, I think, trying to recall, we allow 75 feet in business, we allow 50 feet and you allow 70, 70 or 75 in business. So there's, there's a couple of points like that, but for most, when you look at the especially residential districts, they match up pretty much real good close. I don't recall looking at your setback requirements, but I assume that they're fairly, you know, all residential areas is 10, 20, 10, 10, and 20 in the back. So as far as high residential, 35 feet, we're the same. So I don't, I don't see that there's a whole lot of differences in what you have and what we have.
The, the process of, if one's under the zoning, and you have a situation where your appeal on the zoning board, so Weaverville, what can Weaverville come as a zoning board adjustment? How does that work on us?
Same, same exact, the board adjustments.
And the board of adjustments for the county, how is that set up?
It's, it's appointments at large, and the commissioners make those appointments just like the planning board. Where the planning board is, is basically down the school districts, the board of adjustments are membership.
And so the folks who are present in ours, who are present in our areas that will come under the county, they will be eligible then for appointments from the county commissioners.
Oh, it seems so.
Michael, I know you've done some working with John on this, could you give some supplementation for John and John?
Not really. I mean, I think we're, we're, we've looked at the zoning classifications, I agree, John, they match up pretty closely. The vast majority, I think, of the property we've gone from out, is going to be residential. There's, there's a couple of industrial sites, maybe more to the commercial areas, but it is predominantly residential, and our, our ordinances match really closely with the county's high limitations. Our setbacks are a little bit different. Our setbacks are 30, 30 in front, and then 10 on the other side, so actually, you know, if one way, less regulation for those, so that's, that's pretty much the, in a, in a, in a, in a, we match up pretty closely.
I think non-performing uses, as I recall, is a different scenario, since I'm late at days, I'm not performing use, I think there's less than that, as I recall.
One final question from me, before I stop monopolizing the questions. The folks then who actually live in our presence today, the folks we're talking about a little generally more, they will be getting notices over the next little while concerning public hearing, is that correct?
We would not physically give them a mailing unless they are an out-of-town owner. What we would put notices, we would notice, just like we would for the, for River County, we would notice with the maps in the paper, we would go out and put out signs at intersections, just like you would for a notice for a zoning variance or whatever, or rezoning, and then we would, then we would do.
People will, there will be opportunity that, for people that are paying much attention, they'll, they'll hopefully be aware.
And what we've, you know, I've not had a discussion as far as Weaverville, and since these match up really close, I'm not sure it's an issue. Now, the city of Asheville, you know, we've got nine different districts, the city of Asheville's got many, many districts. So there's, there's probably going to be some opportunity there in the city of Asheville, where people will say, well, hold on, I don't, I'm not sure that you gave me the, I, I should be commercial services instead of neighbors. What we're planning on doing there, and with the city ETJ, is allowing a 90-day period where people can come in and apply for rezoning to the planning board, and I don't know if that would be necessary in Weaverville since it's, it's very close, and like I say, you don't have, you don't have much commercial activity. There are two of them, and we'll pick on as far as commercial, so I'm not sure we'll want to do that there.
One more then for questions, comments.
You mentioned, John, the, in the commercial area, you have a 50-foot height. If somebody wanted to come in and put in a hotel motel, and wanted a 75-foot height, they would have to come before the zoning board of adjustment to get a variance, is that how it would work?
But how many properties do you think, like, about?
A little over 300, I believe. I think we're looking at more than 7,000 for the city of Asheville.
Questions, comments?
The open use designation. That, if I'm understanding your land use plan properly, that uses somehow tied to the MSD, you know?
No, really, what the initial zoning, county law, or the county zoning, I guess the intense zoning, is tied to the MSD district, and then everything outside of that district is, is overuse classification.
Even though, I don't know if I'm correct at this amount, but even so, I mean, I think there are overuse designations immediately adjacent to our ETJ, which are actually long-established, single-family detached residential areas. Is there any, any thought of sort of typing those sorts of things up as protection for those folks?
We had talked about that in retreat, about possibly coming in with another level of zoning in between the rural area and the, I guess, the current zoning area. Just right now, I'm trying to concentrate on getting the ETJ, ETJ done, and then, then we'll come back and address that with the board.
You're kind of covered that.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of issues. I'm trying, I'm also trying to finish up, we're updating the land use plan, so I'm trying to get that, and also the sustainability plan, trying to, we've got that one-year update, so just trying everything to kind of come together. I really, and plan to mess with the ETJ until the state legislature got involved.
Well, yeah, we're all getting more help indeed. I think we have a long-term concern about MSD policy, about suggesting that any of this is going to be fixed during this current trial, but it seems to me that it's like a common interest in pushing MSD to rethink how they do this.
I guess, you know, initially, before we, we adopted zoning, MSD really didn't have an extension plan, at least when we came in with zoning and updated our land use plan last time, we set priorities. You know, we had those secondary and tertiary areas that we wanted to expand, and that's why all of a sudden, the line out against Creek got extended on the, on the development there, so, and that was a secondary area, so at least got MSD on board as far as pulling in a master plan and say, okay, once we get rehab done, where are we going to start moving sewer lines? And we'll at least, at least open that door for some opportunities.
Doug, I have another question, tying into what Doug is saying about residential areas that have, he mentioned that open zoning, that they're really nice upscale type houses. And we have an issue with the, the golfing community, the pre-golfing community, some really upscale houses, and basically open zoning around those, and.
Aren't those, I live in a development, we have our own association with those and all that.
But, you're right, but, and they do too, but I'm thinking if, immediately joining voting up against is open zoning. And they have some, they've expressed a concern.
From the ETJ?
They're, they're in our ETJ.
But a lot of those golf courses are out in areas, they went out in areas, built these golf courses, were, you know, a lot of other things, you could say, something else, so that's, that is a challenge. Maybe in our area, it's, 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 any name next door thing, and it's totally different. They built storage buildings, kind of thing we did, which is built within, they're kind of outside, out of mind, and then behind those, or some single-way trailers, which have been there for a long time, even when I lived in our development. So nobody's bothered anybody, you know, I guess it could all be the same in different areas, you know, you have it open, we had opportunity to buy their property where they would be storage buildings, we did, take the option of it, and our best way was just to put privacy fence up to lock it out. You look at a lot of areas in different developments, people say a lot of privacy fences, and homeowner association, and property backs up, that's, that's not part of the association.
Certainly, right, that the, that in the, if you take the area ETJ, that where there are areas like around the golf course right now, the president would have our ETJ, and he would have zoning categories for them, that would go ahead and match them up with a similar county zone.
Right, that's how, that's why. How much land are we talking about? How much land is it that we're talking about?
Were you talking about in ETJ? Doug, you.
No, with, with the golf course.
The throwback, you actually live out there, is that real estate up there?
Well, it depends on which direction you're going, because you're looking at the total, because, you know, just to the one side, that is in city limits already, so, in fact, all the way around, except for the east side of the community. That's the only part that's really in the ETJ.
And how much of that encompassed?
Well, I know how big that track is, but as far as, there's about a butt to the golf course, there's probably right around 2,500 feet. That piece of ground is 92 acres, is what it would have.
I can shortly age a little bit here, years on council, actually, as I was on the town council in Weaverville, when we extended that ETJ in that direction. And my recollection is that we were really, at the end of the day, folks who are on Woods Creek Road itself, just to be able to have a say in what your commercial development would be along for a road there. Or back to, yeah, possibly, we really did, went to the back that way.
Right.
That was kind of our concentration back then, I think.
In fact, last year, two years ago, we turned down the requests, just conversely, where you and Chapman come to.
So about a half mile. We're talking about the area of the ETJ with Woods Creek, Creek, um, golf course, it would go into open use, and it's about, and now it's asking, it's about a half a mile.
Good, I apologize, I just got messed up with the news here. I never had a D on, sorry, but I apologize. I did get, had to do breakfast with Mayor Root this morning, we talked a little bit. And what is able to markets? Doug, do you have more thoughts? I think I cut you off. I was afraid I cut you off.
No, no, I mean, I, I understand that there is good intent on part of the county. I hope there will continue to be collaboration. We have had a very good relationship between the town and the citizens for ETJ. I was chair of the board, planning department for four and a half years, two of my predecessors from the ETJ, my successor four years, last four years from the ETJ. We have some talent on our two boards, on the ETJ residents, who are majorities on both boards, and I hope that as time goes forward, you will consider recruiting future members of your boards from those areas. Have people with good experience, helpful in the process, and it would be helpful to have people in that region, properly represented in that process.
Yeah, we'd love to get some names of folks, and, and just in talking to Mayor earlier, you have an unusually good relation, I mean, this is not normal in a lot of ETJ situations. I know in camera, I'm not sure the city talks to the ETJ ever, and so it's really a whole different situation, that you very wisely developed, and we don't want to mess that up, we, we hear you. You know, I've done a good job, you, I think that's the way ETJ is supposed to work, what y'all are doing versus some of the other municipalities, that there's no contact, and they just, and they don't want, they resent.
Well, and I, and I can understand that, but I would say, going back to the time that I was, the time that I was chair, two of the biggest fights that we got into had to do with protecting the interests of citizens in the ETJ. And so it's been very much a community, and I have not ever sensed any particular antagonism, certainly no, no antagonism on the boards, which the ETJ members were majorities. I think that we, as a process, we have done it well by the citizens, and it would be our crusade to be as a community to see that there is still a look after and be.
Yeah, I think Doug makes a good point, I served with him, I was three years on that board, and we probably had more battles with in-town developer ones than in-town that we did in ETJs.
Not the norm, obviously, not the norm in the county, but sure, that's right. Other questions or comments?
Yes, I was just asking Michael, that the commissioner may want to know that the relative populations between inside the city limits and those folks in the ETJ.
I mean, they're pretty close, that, we, the, the representation for ETJ is, they have a majority on our board, so the thought is that it's actually, that the population actually exceeds the population of the city, but we had a full structure count, started multiplying people, but they're very, very close. The city's population is about 4,700, they were taking a few people, so they're, they're very close.
That's part of my heated situation, is that we've not been worried about the fact that it was a 4-3 situation, though after our last annexation, the numbers, maybe I'm not right, because it's been a very good working relationship, a lot of these folks are likely, either attend church inside the town, or do business inside the town, therefore they've always looked at Weaverville as much as their towns in many ways. That has worked, I think, rather well, and again, these are therefore folks who have unusual experience with planning, so I think we're finding support for the boards.
So when you, you talk about, so the population of Weaverville is around 4,700, is that right?
That's 3, 3600.
That wasn't.
37, 34, sorry, I had extra time, 37.
37, so those thousand people are voters out there we're not talking to.
And then there's 300 properties from the ETJ, is that right?
I, I have not counted properties, John, I haven't counted.
I think that's Mr. Josh ran 3,500, that's first one.
So it's very much our neighborhoods right outside of town, essentially, you wouldn't really know. You have no figure of sense, you would left one area for another.
Yeah, it seems very similar, wouldn't you? Yeah.
And it seems like some of our classifications are similar. We just have the big open use, which is way too much of our county, but around where you are, it sounds like there is some matchup that kind of is. We all heard you, maybe we took advantage of John's presence, he ran through that, and he really gave us a great explanation of how it's going. Other questions, thoughts, comments? Doug's asking me if we want to talk about parks a little bit while you have your attention. Doug, or if you want?
Well, I guess I'm kind of curious, as you know, this process is going to go forward if the merging of county and Nashville park systems goes forward. Is that your working assumption, that it is going to happen?
Actually, I think it's probable, it, well, there will be an entity created, yes. We have gotten some information that if a lawsuit is filed by the city, there is a reasonable chance the general center will cut the city, the city of Asheville off and join the CRA, is that still in the latest of the records?
Well, it's set up now, it could be the county alone, or the city, or with the county, city and any other number of municipalities, so that's the way it's drafted now.
Is legislation is drafted, actually, or for example, Weaverville or Woodford, or would that be? If legislation is drafted, actually, or, for example, Weaverville or Woodfin, or would that be further legislation due?
I think right now, the Weaverville and Woodfin, that the county could, could do it, yes, yes. I think it's set up for the county to kick off alone, but then anybody else can join.
And, and just logistically, let me give you some thoughts about how it probably is going to play out. You know, if the city, if each board would have to decide whether they want to come on, so you have to assess your assets. Right now, it sounds like, because this is going to happen for the budget season, that everybody's just going to kind of keep and pay for their own, at least for the foreseeable future, for the next six months. And, um, the entity may get reimbursed for some of these costs. We got, we got to set a tax rate, I mean, the burden is on the Buncombe County Commission to set a tax rate for this, we call it the C R A Cultural Resources, a Cultural Recreation Authority. And we're going to have to, that's the big bone right now, is we got, we got to set a rate for it, because it's separate from our budget, it's kind of an independent group. The idea was, of course, I think Representative Ramsey wanted to help the city out because of the water. And so this was a way, you know, instead of having the city, the same argument you have, the same argument, the same situation you have, you have people like Lake Louise, like the mayor in our town, that's why. You have people from all over the county using Lake Louise, well, is that fair to people of Weaverville? You know, should someone else help pay up the cost of Lake Louise and the maintenance? So, I think our board is, is entertaining that, yeah, we, you know, we'll set a rate that all the county people will pay. And whatever's in this entity will get the benefit of that, but we'll set a county rate, so the people not, so if, for instance, you were in the group, Doug, and you wanted to give that asset as part of the CRA, then not just Weaverville, but all the people in Buncombe County would be paying property tax for support. I take it also, as you and I discussed a little bit this morning, you, on the other hand, obviously, the control over that particular facility would flow from, for example, Lake Louise, even I'm talking about the fact that it's central to town in Weaverville. The, there's our coin is, if one puts the Lake Louise under that authority, well, obviously, town council has been along there, the, the enforcement. Well, and I'm going to get some help from legal on this, the entity does got to have taxing power, except for general obligation bonds, that, that's what I understand. And that's a vote, well, you might think a vote for recreation is going to pass, let me sell you bridge. And, and so the idea is to, to have any possibility of borrowing, we probably would retain title, each entity, so you can have borrowing power, because you have to have something to bar against, of course. Again, these are things, we don't know exactly how it's going to go. Well, the county more or less, no matter what happens to the city, actually, well, the county more or less will be working this out over the months ahead, so perhaps some of the various towns in the county will be able to see how this process is going forward, and that's, that's making a more intelligent decision down the road. I think that's a little something up now, I, I think that's exactly what will happen. It's, we'll be the first one in state to do this, I think there's one in Fayetteville that did.
Authority.
Maybe a couple that do something, but nothing like what we're, what we're proposing to do.
Yes, an authority is kind of like the airport, the city still owns the airport, but there's an authority running, and I think David in this played this kind of layout. An authority would run the whole package that you're still on your property.
It wouldn't be needed over to the county.
Or the entity. You would have that option, but it's set up that you could lease it for, say, a dollar if you can.
And I think that's kind of the thinking, you know, we, we probably need to see how it works, and you need, you want to see how it works before you commit Weaverville assets, or even the funding of Weaverville assets. But, the good news for you is it is an opportunity for you to drop that expense of your budget, if you think this, this is the right way to go for Weaverville.
Well, and, and two, the, you know, one of the big goals of the authority would be to have improved the efficiencies of having all these together, and to actually to be able to either bring the cost down, or be able to provide more services. So, if we bring the cost down, we bring the cost down to taxpayers, or we can provide more services to the county, and that's the whole idea for how the efficiency, uh, and.
Well, and if it's successful, we'll bring the cost down and provide more services, I mean, that's the whole, the whole that we want, is to make it better, and lots of things.
It, it's kind of our model, and we most recently did, well, not most recently did, the whole idea is, people want service, and they don't particularly care who owns it or pays for it or controls it. You know, you've got issues that you have to con, talk to your people, your constituents about, to make sure they're comfortable with it, but we did the same thing with the health department. We were putting four point six million into the health department, and we were missing three to four hundred people a month, but we were claiming to give everybody healthcare. Well, we contracted with Lynch's Western Carolina Community Health, we're putting two point three million in it, and now instead of nine thousand unduplicated patients, we're serving sixteen thousand, and that's kind of the idea, right? They, they're set up to do it, and, you know, how many lawnmower, do you need a lawnmower, do you need the weed eaters, do you need the, you know, but, but some of the preliminaries we're doing on it, just because you're asking, aren't, we're not going to, it's not a job cutting thing, we're not interested in taking people's jobs. So, everybody keeps their job, same benefits, same rate of pay, and we improve whatever it is, and if it doesn't get improved, you, you know, you got to wonder, you still have the benefit of people outside Weaverville paying for it, traditionally Weaverville assets, but is it a good thing for you? So, I think that's why you probably want to keep title, and then if it wasn't good, you'd say, well, that didn't work so well. But you would start paying for it again, you know, exclusively, so you always weigh that against what you're getting, but, you know, we, we do that a lot.
You mentioned it's a regional park, uh, and it is, we did survey, about eighty percent of the people using the Lake Louise park are outside the county limits. They made a big, it would be related, stopped people walking their dogs, right? They moved over to the Lake Louise, yeah, they, uh, the, the dog poo increased too, so.
So, tax that, like, for.
So, the complex kind of, I mean, this was one layer addition to that. So, there's some complexities on this issue, and it's going to be a work in progress, sort of, sort of understand that. And then there is another wrinkle to it, and that's the whole greenways program, where you might have parks connected by a greenway, yeah, the greenway's going to be sort of, I mean, it's county program, but some of it's going to be on various town lands.
You know, well, that's probably the lowest line of truth, Doug, because we can, you know, people love it when municipalities come together and entities join together and say, we would like to jointly present this application for this. And there's still money, there's still money that can be had in grants, um, I forgot who we were talking, you know, there was talk, someone said, they're still missing a lot of government money in greenways. I don't know, we need to get together, but we're hoping by having an entity that's regional, we can get more for everybody.
Right, and they'll be.
And I do want to say, excuse me, I, I do want to say in happy regard, thanks very much for, uh, the support that you've given to this feasibility study, right, that we're trying to pursue.
Well, your, people in Weaverville pay the same taxes as people that live out in the south, in the Canlar Island, I mean, you know, that's the thing, your, your people pay the exact same taxes as everybody else in Buncombe County, and we want to work with you, and we mean that, we're not just, and this is one of the places money where our mouth is on, so.
Yeah, I heard what you said about wait and see, but what if we decided we would like to accelerate the process, how quickly do you think, uh, the authority might consider, uh, with a small municipality, might it us coming in?
Well, it would be whoever's on the board, so we don't know who's even going to be on the board, it would be a board decision of the CRA. Um, I, I, I think sooner than later, well, I mean, I, I don't think it's something, I think it's a great idea, I think it's times come, and I feel like our board's going to be supportive of it. We don't, we don't control what the general assembly does, they can take or give or take, you know, and so we, we're out of that loop. But I think if y'all want to be into it, we'd certainly want to work with you a lot sooner than later, and I, I think we're kind of looking at the first year, probably, or at least the first six months, just because of the fiscal budget and all, we're, we're thinking, everybody keeps everything, and we just kind of reimburse the, uh, the, the CRA reverses the, the entities for what they're keeping up. And we figured these things out, because it's just not enough time before we have to make it. The only budget decision we're going to have to make is how much to put in, and that would kind of depend on who's in it, but I guarantee you we'll be open to other municipalities, and we have talked a little bit with the.
I think the great thing about it is, um, it will emphasize and make stronger the connectivity throughout the county. You know, we know some folks think that, um, Buncombe County is just Asheville, um, and I think the strength of us, um, will be that the county goes from Black Mountain, Weaverville, Barnesville, Canlar, and south, and this whole concept will be great for everybody. I mean, we got more, you know, our, I did more emails about the nature center and, and the CRA, no matter what the individual was touching, they're alive.
One of the things, too, is pretty positive is, is this is circulating out in the business community, um, you kind of think you're getting just maybe a lot of pushback, but it's, the cause of bringing the regional and the efficiencies and people looking way out in this, some of the businesses are not getting the pushback that you would think from this type of idea. And, uh, the great thing about money is you'll take it from where you can get it, so when you create this regional thing, where more people can come in and enjoy the services, more people are okay with paying for them, then, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm looking way out on this thing and, and seeing what it can do for the, for the region, and I think it's, I think it's pretty positive. There's also a callback in there, too, so I put something in, and if you decide later, you can pull it out, there's a lot of different, some features in there I don't understand, but, uh, the overall concept of it is, uh, pretty, pretty positive. I mean, nobody likes a tax, but, you know, you got to kind of get through all that discussion, bringing all these assets together, that's a good one.
Well, and he had a great point, Landis Guy, like, uh, would be very helpful with grant money, that's a great point.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, we, we had talked, Buncombe County had had talks with the city before about merging parks and, and this isn't a new, brand new thing. And it kind of fell apart, and then Representative Ramsey kind of said, well, this isn't the way to do this, and we asked Representative Ramsey to add libraries to it, because we kind of, cultural and recreation, there are some, some overlap there, not, it's not a separate part. It, it's a dedicated revenue source is another thing, and so it's not dependent on who the elected officials are, that's right, and that really appeals to some folks that are saying, gosh, I don't want to depend on how, which way the winds are blowing politically, we want to have, we want to know what we've got to work with, and we want to improve them. And it's just hard, it's hard for each, all six municipalities to improve them the way you want to, with your budgets and the pressures you have, because our, our pie's run up two point eight billion with a B dollars, and it's reevaluation. And I don't know how much, how it came out of Weaverville, but it's probably really going to be tough for you.
Well, the, the other thing, too, is, is just to make this point, I'll touch, but, is the, uh, uh, this is going to place all these, uh, these requests for funding within this one authority, and it keeps the situation that the county's in every year, I won't keep it from that, but some, some monies, well, they'll have to be requested there. And so the scope of it will be whatever the tax is, the money will be available there, and so I think it can actually save the taxpayer's money, because depending on the, the makeup, you know, of the board, depending on what somebody might think, you know, you can just vote to hand out X number of dollars. Well, in this, it's not a vote, it's people on the board, you know, and it's the amount of money that's available.
All, all money they bring in.
Whatever money you bring in is what you'll have to just spend, so it's a good, uh, good, good way to be, good steward, I think, for the county.
And you know, in our talks, we had, we just had one short meeting with the city about this, actually, in Asheville, and they were saying, what if we wanted to put money into our assets from the city money? And it certainly would do that, I mean, it kind of, that would be up to the municipality, y'all, you know, do that, right?
There's a lot of flexibility as to how the, kind of, local areas contract, and I just think the county can't kick off alone, or the city, or the county within the deal of municipalities.
Other questions or comments? Uh, do you want to raise this issue currently?
I think Michael knows more about the issue than that, too.
Animal control?
Animal control.
Well, it's not animal control, it's, it's the, it's the animal shelter, and our friends at the Humane Society have asked us to start kicking in some money towards that, which we've never done before, so.
Conversation with other mayors this morning, I know this is an issue of interest to various municipalities, uh, in the county, I'm not entirely sure Mike will have the county businesses, is the county involved in or is it being direct contracted with us in the animal shelter?
I, I'm not sure, I, I know the county has a contract with Asheville Humane Society to operate the animal care part of the shelter. And I think that's what the Humane Society wants us to contribute, is, is toward the animal care part of, of the shelter, for the animals that originated in Weaverville, I don't know if the contract would be directly with the Humane Society, with the county, a three-party agreement, I haven't.
Things, what, what, what concern I have had has been whether or not the county is already doing this as well, and so that, that, that's since my opinion is twice, I guess, is going to be my concern, is, am I county taxes paying for this, or am I county taxes paying for it again?
I, I will say, um, over the years, what's happened is the county has a contract with Asheville Humane, the city of Asheville has had a contract with Asheville Humane, um, Black Mountain has had it as well, and, um, so I think, I think that Asheville Humane is looking, um, to make it more even, um, throughout the county, so that these municipalities help with their own, they go there. That's my understanding, and it would be separate from the county, is that right?
It's been a while, but I recall discussions before between the county and Weaverville regarding our animal control, taking care of the responses within Weaverville, and we just couldn't come to an arrangement of what that fee would be.
Oh, yeah, they bill sixty dollars per animal, pick up and transport it.
And I guess that, this is myself, philosophically, anyway, it would seem to me, that's a long, but it would seem to me that given the fact that I now am a Buncombe County resident, and I would presume that as a county resident, or live out of the E T J for instance, that I'll be getting the service, my county tax is already going to be paid toward it, I guess, I think it's not entirely clear to me why it's appropriate then I'm paying them in addition as a rural city.
I think county-wise, the, the person we're missing to have that discussion at all would be Jim Ollin, who's, you know, he monitors the A H S contract and the cost and all that, so, that's something we can look into.
But, but I know that as far as the contract with the, with the city, the county is not involved with that, that's a separate contract that Asheville Humane has with the city of Asheville.
I have to run, why can't the city do this?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd probably look at their contract and see if they get something over above what they give us county residents.
I remember, um, years ago, the town in Black Mountain did their own animal control, and then they found out it was cheaper to have the sheriff's department do it, and have the same animal control ordinance, and then I believe Black Mountain pays, um, for animal goes to the county.
I believe that's correct. So, I don't know that our animal control responds into Weaverville right now, but that might be the case.
They do.
They do, they, they charge them on sixty dollars.
We call when they come, they pay, they also, or, yeah, they send some, some. We call them, and they come and pay bills, or, or, yeah, and they send some, some much later.
Is that my bear's a further example?
Other issues?
Focus on the county commission, you want to say anything, Doug, so you actually got our attention.
Our board line came to our house. And I think it's been great, I think more people can get together and better. More minds are better than one.
And as ETJ or the CRA moves along, and you'd like to have a joint meeting in Weaverville, I'm sure we'd be glad to do that, we'd want to, you know, again, we represent the same folks you do, so we just, we want to make sure if I understand, and, and, and get the, get the idea and understand this is an improvement of whatever, you know, whatever decision you made, whatever decision we made. We wanted to, this is, we're trying to do the best we can for you, based on what we have to work with. People love to see municipalities work together. I mean, that is off-the-scale number-one thing I hear in my travels, is that they really want us to work more together, so we, we'd love it, and we really appreciate you initiating this meeting. And Bert, if you're understanding the legality of joining the meeting, thank you very much, Bert.